Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissions. We will begin with a moment of prayer. Doing that this week. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mathieu.
Thank you very much. Given the Lent season, there's a prayer that in the Eastern Orthodox faith is recited every day during Great and Holy Lent. I thought it was appropriate for this evening, so if you would bow your heads. Lord and Master of my life, take from me the spirit of sloth, faint-heartedness, lust of power, and idle talk. Instead, give to me your servant the spirit of chastity, humility, patience, and love. Yea, O Lord and King, grant me to see my own faults and not to judge my brother, for you are holy from all ages to all ages. Amen.
Now Nathan Bird will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Houserman. Commissioner Domas. Commissioner Sample. Commissioner Nakagiri. Commissioner Drake. Commissioner Deaton. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Fiani. And Commissioner Gross. A quorum is present.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to offer an amendment to the agenda. Under correspondence, there should be two additional items from Marquette County. One, a resolution honoring the Michigan Association of Counties' 125th anniversary, and a second one in support of county board of revisions.
Without objection, those will be entered.
Commissioner, can you please speak into the mic, Commissioner Domas? We cannot hear you.
Now it should, now it'll work.
That's better. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would also like, if I could. I would like to add a reconsideration of resolution that was defeated last time. Resolution number 2023-02-25. I would like that to be reconsidered in this agenda.
We will include that with the with the approval of the resolutions for consideration. Do you have a copy of that, by the way?
I think, oh, yes, we do. I think a copy is placed in everybody's desk.
So we'll consider that. Well, without objection, I think we'll just include it. You would object? In which case we'll we will
So I am making a motion to that effect, that we add that to the agenda.
All right, so moved. Is there a support? And there is support. All those, are there any comments or questions?
We also have a motion by Commissioner Gross to add correspondence. Would you like to handle these separately if we're going to have multiple? Because we need two-thirds, I believe, to, for reconsideration, where we just need a simple majority for the addition of correspondence. So I would defer to legal counsel if they're on, or? How would you like to proceed?
I included those without objection.
Okay.
For the first ones, yeah. Yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, I want to address the two-thirds. It is, it's two-thirds vote if the motion to reconsider was made at a meeting later than the next meeting. This is the, the meeting where the UNIS resolution was voted on was the meeting directly prior to this meeting, and it is a simple majority.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. It's been supported. Are there any comments or questions? You want to read the motion, ma'am?
Chairman Domas.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps there also is another agenda item to add regarding the Sheriff's Department. Maybe if we tackled each item individually, would that be acceptable?
That would be fine.
So I think the first motion pertained to Commissioner Gross regarding additions for the correspondence. I don't think any of us have any objection to the correspondence.
But, you know, I think that that
And they were without objection.
Oh, include it on the agenda. Okay. Then I guess the, the other motion on hand is the one made by Commissioner Houserman.
Right, we're going to vote on that.
Can I ask who the support for that resolution?
Nakagiri.
Okay.
I think that takes us to the discussion portion of that motion.
That's what it does.
And then after that, after we discuss that.
Then we'll add that other
We'll have the Sheriff's Department.
That will be great. We have some comment. Commissioner, anybody? Hearing nothing, hearing no comments, will all those, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Just to clarify, I have two nays, and that would be Commissioner Smith and Gross.
Yes. All right.
At this time, Chairman Domas, I move to amend the agenda to add item 12I, Resolution Authorizing the Submission of a Community Project Funding Application, submitted by the Administration of Sheriff's Department.
Point of force. The prior resolution will probably be 12I. Next will be 12J for the sheriff resolution.
Even as, even though it's considered a, or even though it's a reconsideration? I don't, it doesn't matter to me. I just
Let's just give it a
Okay, then.
Give it in. All right, so we got an HI and a J. You want to pick one you like?
So the I move to amend the agenda to add, under Agenda Item 12J, Resolution Authorizing the Submission of a Community Project Funding Application, submitted by Administration Sheriff's Department.
Okay, is there support?
Support, Derek.
Support. Are there any comments or questions? No comments or questions, will those who support this resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? We have two new ones here. Now, I believe, Madam Clerk, we're, we're next with employee recognition.
I believe we need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong, legal counsel.
That's right. Let's approve the agenda as amended.
All right, so the Chair will entertain a motion to accept the amended agenda.
So moved, Smith. Support.
Moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have an amended agenda.
I move to accept and file the correspondence 6A through D.
Was there two added?
There was the additional two, so that's
Right, but aren't they under Item C, the additional two?
I believe they're separate items.
These are, you're talking correspondence?
Yes. How about this? I move to accept and file all correspondence received this evening.
Okay.
Everybody, without objection, we will accept your motion. Okay.
Support.
All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're in. Next, Commissioner Gross, if you would, please.
Certainly.
Call the young lady who will be recognized this evening as a special employee, Julie Tagerdyne, from the Vital Records, as a Vital Records clerk. Would you please come up?
Stay around. Attention, salute. Some general information here, first of all, about the Employee Recognition Program. Employee recognition awards are presented on a quarterly basis based on nominations from internal, i.e. an employee's own department, or external, different departments, or members of the public sources. Nominations are gathered and reviewed by a group of employee committee members who have been elected by the employee body. The committee decides who, in their collective opinion, went above and beyond in their service and do deserve special recognition. Honorable mentions are also named and recognized. Each nominee is celebrated for their outstanding service as well. Winners in each category are recognized at a Board of Commissioners meeting, the annual State of the County address, or are featured in an article in the county newsletter and on the county website. They also receive a certificate and token of appreciation. So today, we are here to congratulate our winner of an internal nomination, Julie Tagerdyne. She has been with Livingston County for about two and a half years as a Vital Records clerk in the clerk's office. The Vital Records is responsible for receiving and processing and recording documents for births, deaths, marriages, and other records appropriately processed by the Office of the County Clerk. The Vital Records clerk assists customers at the counter, on the phone, and online with questions related to records and procedures of the clerk's office. The nomination was sent in by a coworker of Julie's who witnessed this act and decided that it was worthy of recognition. An elderly gentleman came into the office for a veteran's ID card and left his driver's license. Julie tried to find a phone number for him, but none was listed. Julie took it upon herself to drive over to his home after her shift and hand-deliver the license to him. He was so grateful, since he had no idea that he had left his license in the office. So with that, I'm very proud on behalf of my colleagues in the board to present this certificate to Julie Tagerdyne. Congratulations on a job well done.
Would you like to come up here?
Sure.
And while you're doing, I believe the boss has something to say.
I do. I would, I would just like to commend Julie. She's, she's such a wonderful addition to the office. The job of clerk sounds so easy, but the ladies in the Vital Records, they just, they provide outstanding service to the public, and it's an honor to have Julie as a team member within our office. We, we can teach most people how to do the paperwork. What we, as elected officials and directors of departments, cannot teach is that inherent kindness that is built into someone like Julie has. It is natural for her to be caring, kind, and well-serving to the public. So Julie is a perfect public servant, and it's a privilege to work with Julie.
Are we in the picture? We're done with the picture?
Yes, that would be nice. You guys want to come stand up here with Julie? Yeah, just stand up in front there with her.
This was totally
Depends how.
She can come down here with her family if she wants.
You can do anything you want. You're the boss.
You're the boss. Have a nice picture, Julie.
Great. Thank you.
I will say it's kind of nice to have a Tagerdyne back in the clerk's office. She is a relative of Dave Tagerdyne, so we have another Tagerdyne in the clerk's office, so.
Next is a call to the public. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone?
Get turn back on. I do have two cards. First, we have Tammy Higgins from Iosco Township.
Hello. I did send you guys a presentation on the 27th, and thank you, Mr. Fennani, for you responded. So I'll get at it. Livingston County has recreational trails in our parks, but it does not have bike lanes or pedestrian-friendly infrastructure on our roads. You can find initiatives, federal grant funding, and the building of non-motorized infrastructure in surrounding counties such as Wayne, Oakland, Washtenaw, and the Combs Counties, despite a master plan adopted by this Livingston County Commissioners in October of 2018. The master plan lists complete streets, safe routes to school. Yet there are schools in Livingston County that don't have safe routes, and our roads are dangerous and unsafe for pedestrians, cyclists, youth, the elderly, and those with disabilities. In our county, most of the roads are 55 mile-per-hour roads with no shoulders, which degrades the roadbed, which makes them unsafe for both motorists and non-motors alike. The roads in Livingston County are old and designed at a time when the population was much less and the county was less developed. Not having updated road designs or the funding to keep up with the transportation demand as the population increases is dangerous and reckless, especially as Livingston County is experiencing a population growth, as you all know from our latest census data. It is time for Livingston County to implement the pedestrian-friendly infrastructure as shown in that 2018 master plan. As county commissioners, you can set the direction. Such as collaboration with Livingston County Road Commission, MDOT, SEMCOG, local townships, and nonprofits to work together and pool resources. To truly build a complete transportation system, Steve Wassley, managing director of Livingston County Road Commission, has stated via email correspondence with me that the revenue that is received from the Act 51 formula is not enough to maintain our current roads. I am here today to ask you to use your permission, positions to promote safer roads, insisting that complete streets concept and, as listed in the master plan, are implemented, reevaluate road funding, apply for grants, and help all the responsible entities to find solutions to improve our roads. Act 51 funds are not providing enough to upgrade our roads to 21st century standards. Safer does not always mean more cost. There are ways to design roads and place markings that do not incur exorbitant costs, as I gave you in some of your handouts. Complete streets are imperative for the safety of all road users, including those in our rural townships. Vulnerable road users should not get injured or killed by motorists because of inadequate road design. I want Livingston County to lead the way on safety and protecting human life. We are a county that prides ourselves on life and liberty. We need to be protecting the life and liberty of those who don't drive. I do hope you all agree. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Randy Clausen Howell.
Part why you'd like to come and have these honor these employees. That was so great. I'm glad to be here again, and I, I do want to talk about people and transportation. The, the fact that transportation has to be for people, and we have people, 24% of the people in Livingston County who can't drive or can't afford hard, hardly afford cars. So I encourage you to continue your work to make Livingston County a better place, county, a better place for the transportation, transit dependable people. We're, we're looking for those people, for you to make the changes that you need to make in order that they will have transportation, adequate public transportation, including weekends. So that's our goal, and there are several of us that are working with the Transportation Coalition, working at our church, doing things like, like we do to bring your attention to the fact that it, the, the money is in your hands, and we want, want it to be used for the people who are in most need. So thanks for your attention to that detail. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have no additional cards in the, in the board chambers.
Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Commissioner, we have Lori Cowan.
All right, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm Lori Cowan from Unadilla Township, and I'm addressing you as my position as Unadilla trustee and also with our board. And it's concerning the trunk line that you're finally eventually going to connect Unadilla to, to our police and fire department that the rest of the county has had for 12-plus years. And we were just informed that the plan is to bring the line down to the police department, but not connect to the fire department, and that you were going to rely on a signal similar to a Wi-Fi for our fire department. And myself, as well as the rest of the board, find this unacceptable. We've been waiting patiently for years to have the same service, of quality of service that everyone in the county has, all the other townships, and I'm not quite sure why you want to cut corners on this and deny us the best possible connection. So I hope you'll reconsider the plan so that the line goes directly to our fire department as well. It's not even that far from our police department. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I do not see any more on Zoom, Commissioner.
If there are no more Zoom callers, we will move on with the agenda. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the last meeting, February 27th.
So moved, Gross.
All right, so there's a motion to approve these minutes, and it's been supported. Are there any corrections or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There are no tabled items from previous meetings, except the one that's been put on the agenda already. Reports. Is there anyone that has a report? No reports. Oh, SEMCOG report. I'm sorry.
You were building suspense, right?
I was building suspense, yeah. It was getting too boring in here all of a sudden, too quiet. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to Livingston County.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity tonight. I'm Amy O'Leary. I'm the executive director of SEMCOG. I've met a number of you in the past with some new faces, so appreciate a number of you joining SEMCOG as alternate or delegate to our organization. We're excited. A couple of you were at our first meeting, so we really appreciate that. We want to hear your voice in Livingston County and what's important to you. So having you be active in our executive committee and general assembly is really important. So I'm Amy O'Leary, executive director.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Terrio, and I'm the Director of External Affairs with SEMCOG. So we're going to split the presentation just to keep it lively for you tonight.
That's fine.
All right. So you can go to the first slide. A little bit about SEMCOG. We are an association of local governments. We have 180 communities that choose to be members of SEMCOG. It's seven counties, cities, villages, townships, intermediate school districts, and community colleges. Again, around the seven-county area of metropolitan Detroit. In addition to being an association of local governments, we're also a regional planning agency. So we really look at the long term of what things are going to look like. And if you go to the next slide, you can see in the areas of transportation, environment, parks and trails, community economic development, and education. So in addition to looking at really, and we do a lot of plans about what the future is going to look like in working with all of you and setting that course, we also work as the council of local governments to provide technical assistance, best practices, shared data, coordinate activities amongst all of us as local governments. So SEMCOG, the organization is nonpartisan. We bring together elected officials from all of those parts of our region together. And because we hear from everyone, by the end of the day, by the time it gets to the executive committee through task forces and a lot of ways of getting input, we often have consensus of the region, which is great. We tailor our support and our technical assistance that we work on to really look at whether you're a county or a big city, but also if you're a rural area or a smaller city or township, and how can we assist all of our members and the education community to meet our members' needs? We have about 65 staff at SEMCOG that have expertise that can assist. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see, diving in a little bit, one of the areas that we work a lot in is in transportation. We're responsible both for developing that long-range plan, so looking out the next 20 years, but also then, once we do that plan, that opens up our region to receive about $1 billion a year in road funding and federal road funding annually. So we have a long-range plan and then a short-term, four-year plan called the Transportation Improvement Program or TIP. And this slide just shows you the amount of money allocated to Livingston County and the types of projects that are included. Now, this is the money that goes to Livingston County Road Commissions and the cities and villages, those that own the roads. In addition to that, though, there is about $300 million additionally programmed for MDOT projects. So this doesn't include MDOT projects, including one of the bigger projects, the Flex Route that's going on. So as a member, you also receive and know that we do a lot of data analysis and have a lot of tools out there. So I just want to highlight a couple of those. We have Labor Shed, labor information about what's going on in the region, and we can always take that data and zoom in into Livingston County, so that's what you see in the top left. We have economic information in the top right. In the bottom left, we have all of the parks mapped in the region, along with what are the amenities. So if you're interested in seeing like, well, I've heard, you know, we want to get another dog park. How many dog parks are, you know, within our neighbors? We could see what that already looks like. And we have a lot of transportation information, including what you see in the bottom right is our crash information. So you can see where the traffic crashes occur, but also the severity, what type of crash it was. For example, it allows you to sort. In addition, we have pavement condition, bridge condition, kind of the bread and butter infrastructure data as well. We have what's called community profiles, so you can learn everything about a community, which I know you all know a lot of that, but if you want to see the demographic data in this new census data, it's broken out both in like tabular form as well as map form, so it's map-based as well. And we also will be having our new forecast, so we forecast out to 2050. And that forecast is, starts at the regional level, goes to the county level, but then goes to the individual municipality out to 2050, both for employment and for population. So if that's something that you're interested in learning more about at the county level or at a community level, happy to have a member of our data team come out too. And, and we do many presentations to chambers of commerce and libraries about kind of the future of, of what it looks like in certain communities. So many of you are familiar with the work that we are doing in broadband. We have mapped the broadband availability and usage. We have mapped the broadband availability and usage, and what many will tell us is that's not an accurate map because it's entirely based on FCC, and that's why you all are doing all the efforts that you're doing to do your own mapping. The next slide really shows that one of the things that we were really happy about, we were just speaking about it before the meeting, is that you all had received a planning assistant grant from SEMCOG to be able to help take you to a certain level of broadband surveying in your communities. So, and we really do think that that is a model for other counties that are now starting that process as well. So we often have them talk to your staff in Livingston County and explain what's going on.
I have a question, if I could.
Oh, sure.
Today is, if I understand it correctly, is the deadline for Robin Grants. I don't know if you're aware of that, but we're hoping that we will be part of that. I don't know if there's any way that you could make sure that Livingston gets considered there.
Right, well, we hopefully have already written you your letter of support, because as a region, the federal, no matter what the topic, if it's a community project or it's for these grants, the more that the region can connect is better. So hopefully, we did do that. I know we've been busy in writing, I just heard 45 letters of support in three days just on water infrastructure, so they are highly looked at, so I would, hopefully, we were able to do that. If not, we turn them around really quickly.
Okay, yeah, I think today is the deadline, so anyways, but thank you.
So when we talk about funding and grants, there are a lot of opportunities and some that you all are taking or your communities are taking advantage of. One is the Transportation Alternatives Program that's offered on an ongoing basis. We look at all the projects three times a year at SEMCOG. It really is a great opportunity. We receive about $5 million or $10 million annually just from the SEMCOG side, and then MDA receives some as well. To do things like you see on the screen, we just last week approved sidewalk improvements in Brighton, for example. So there's opportunities for sidewalks, for trails and paths, as well as stormwater management, if you're interested in that topic as well. We also just approved, we have a new program through the federal government that we are charged with running, it's called the Carbon Reduction Program, which allowed us to fund a roundabout as well. And then finally, just encourage you to think about those Planning Assistance Grants Program. They are available annually, and we will be putting out another call for those, so encourage you to think about what topic you're interested in. We have a lot of categories, so there's quite an amount that you can pick from. We try to do that on purpose, but it really is, you know, an opportunity for you all to, I'd like you to think about taking advantage of, and our staff can be helpful too as well. Then last on my slide, and I'll turn it over to my partner here, is just to know that we offer technical assistance with our staff that have expertise in a lot of different topics, whether you want to talk a little bit more about walking and biking or transportation safety, or all these different funding pots, and we really do try to keep on top of what those are and provide that information to you all, or stormwater infrastructure. Those are available anytime you want us to come out. We can talk over the phone, or we can come out and look at a site. We often go and do site evaluations for people too that are interested in like that TAP program, for example. All right, I'm going to turn over to Cheryl.
Well, thank you. And before I even get started on my part of the presentation, it was so heartwarming to hear your residents talk about their current concern in regards to transportation and non-motorized transit, and, you know, the needs in the community. So SEMCOG definitely sees ourselves as a partner to you and your local communities as you're doing that planning and implementation, so we didn't pay them to do the ad. But in regards to the university workshops and training, SEMCOG offers a number of in-person workshops as well as online webinars, and they offer a number of variety of information at no cost to our members. The QR code that's on your screen will take you to the current list of upcoming workshops as well as an on-demand library of past demonstrations that we have had. The resources are available to address gaps in broadband as well as the digital divide, which is an area of great concern here as well. We have case studies and resources, and we look at state and federal funding for parks and trails as other parts of information that may be available to you or to your local communities as well. And we emphasize learning from your peers, because often the best information and knowledge is from those who have already experienced it and can show you some of the best practices and shortcuts and just tools of the trade. So we often encourage that sharing of information as well as their successes and strategies going forward. One of the things, I just started with SEMCOG in January, and prior to that, I was working with local government and Oakland County with the Board of Commissioners there, but a good part of what I've done since I've been here is visiting with the legislators in Lansing, and that is a big emphasis for SEMCOG in terms of sharing the voices of our local community so that they understand what are our priorities and our needs. And we have a platform that was produced based on input from our locals in regards to the legislative policy platform. I don't have a copy with me today because it's been so popular, it's out for reproduction, but I'll send you an electronic copy with the link to that. Also, we have activities to amplify the voices of our locals and to also engage with our elected officials in Lansing as well as DC. We reach out to them on a regular basis in regards to bills that are pending, and one of the areas currently that we're looking at in particular is support for the water infrastructure and local road funding, which we all understand is a desperate need for our locals in regards to the assets that need to be reinvested in. On the next slide. As part of our partnership with you, we engage in a number of ways in which we try to elevate the local communities and the assets that they offer. So one thing we do, we offer a bi-weekly newsletter, a digital newsletter called the Regional Update. We also encourage you to become involved as a member of one of our working task force. And some of the projects that we're working on in partnership with local communities include the Walk Bike Drive Safe and the One Water Campaign. And the One Water Campaign in particular is getting ready to roll out a number of materials that you can share with local residents, including the bike risks that are illuminated and other decals and information that are helpful to people who are riding their bikes. And a very exciting one that's recently started is the Shop Local, and we work with the local, especially downtown areas, to have videos of your shopping districts called Shop Local. And one of those that we featured, I believe, was bright. And we have a couple of apps that are very useful, but Park Finder and the Trail Explorer that help you to identify the trails in your area or in connecting communities for people who are interested in utilizing the trails and seeing their connectivity. And this is an example of the Shop Local video, which was started last year, and, well, 2021. And it focuses on the shopping local and holiday season, and again, Brighton was one of those communities that was featured. And we do feature local cities, villages, townships, as well as counties. So if you're interested, or you know a local community that's interested, have them reach out to us, we'd be happy to assist with that promotional effort. And on the next slide, we're talking about the other produced videos that are available through SEMCOG, and we, as we said, we shared some of the best practices and, okay, okay. Did I miss one?
No.
You did. Okay. All right. Best practices and local successes, and again, we featured Howell. And now we want to invite you to our next general assembly meeting, which will be on March 23rd at Mary Grove Conservancy in Detroit. Some of the key action items will be the 2050 Regional Development Forecast, as well as Water Infrastructure Policies and Actions, and that document was shared with you today, as well as the 2023 Budget and Work Program for SEMCOG. And some of the other fun stuff that we do, we have member meetups and engagements. These are more informal gatherings. April 21 will be a Green Summit at University of Michigan Dearborn in their environmental center. May 17 will be a member meetup with the Gordy Howe Bridge Tour, which we expect to have a lot of people interested in that. I heard that Amy took some pictures in places that people weren't normally allowed to visit last time.
You couldn't take a selfie when you were touring the Gordy Howe Bridge, but it was true.
Okay, security breach. And in July, we're looking to have a visit to Innovation Hill, a park tour in Rochester Hills, and in the fall, we are actually trying to have something in this area, perhaps downtown Brighton or Howell, but if you have some ideas in terms of Livingston County, that would be a great place for others throughout the region to visit, please share that with us because we are in the planning stages for that. And in closing, there's lots of ways to connect to SEMCOG, there's SEMCOG.org, S-E-M-C-O-G.org, and we are also on social media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, LinkedIn, and we have YouTube videos as well. Thank you again for your time.
I have a question, if I could. Munitrix, that is a data collection dispersment thing. Now, does SEMCOG have that? I know it used to be on our, it used to be on our front page of our website. It is, it's there, but it's not on the front page like it used to be. And I tried to get on it, and there's some registration, so I just did this this weekend, and not knowing that you were, not realizing you were coming here. So I have not asked our local people how we get a registration to get access to that information, so.
I believe that you go through the SEMCOG website, and from there, you'll go to the link to the Munitrix.
So I can, I can just register myself, or any citizen could do that?
We can follow up with you, but we do pay a fee to Munitrix to be able to like provide local communities access to the database.
Okay.
I'm not, honestly, I don't know if the public, or if you have to be an elected official, but I think anybody, so we can follow up.
Okay.
That's actually under one of the purviews of Cheryl in her new job, is to really understand what Munitrix provides with the amount of, you know, support we provide them, and kind of, that'll be a good reason to be involved with that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have a question, and the one slide you showed, Transportation Alternatives Program, and one of the items shown there was a roundabout for the Chalice Road, Bauer Road in Brighton area, and the amount shown was $450,000. I was wondering, was that developed in conjunction with our county road commission?
Right, right. They, so that was not TAP, it was Carbon Reduction, a program that we just recently started running. Yes, they submitted an application to SEMCOG. We did a call for projects, and then they put in for how much it would cost to be able to do the roundabout.
I was a little curious about that because my district is Green Oak Township, and we just put a roundabout in down south of town, and the price tag was $1,006,000. So I'm curious what the road commission is thinking. If they're getting $450,000 from you folks, you know, they must have another source.
Yeah, that could be.
Yeah. I could reach out to them. Thank you.
I can follow up if you want, and get you some information back from my, yeah, our staff who runs that program.
Okay. Sure.
Commissioner. I think maybe Green Oak is just big spenders, I don't know. No, to your, to your points, ladies, and thank you both, Cheryl and Amy. Greatly appreciate the presentation. I literally landed about 6:30 this morning on a red eye back from the Phoenix area, and the group we were with all had a history here in Livingston County at some point, whether it was Howell or Brighton or the surrounding areas. And as we were driving through Arizona countryside, and we noticed the breadth of the roads and how easy they made it for people to ride their bikes, and how near every school was a walkway for the children. And we looked at it, and not only did it hit us as what a enjoyable environment, what a safe environment, but it hit us as what a quality environment. Where, you know, in Michigan, it gets a little gray this time of year, if you haven't noticed, and things kind of tunnel in a little bit, but if we had a little more breadth, a little more ease of access, a little more safety cushion in our roadways, so I applaud you for your efforts and for your intentions, so.
Thank you.
I see another hand up now. Well, we want to thank you for being here this evening, and everyone appreciates SEMCOG. We have representatives here who look forward to meeting, you know, with the SEMCOG personnel, and we've had a long and successful relationship with SEMCOG over the years, so. And I would echo Commissioner Smith's comments on bike paths. We do have a lot of opportunities for bike paths, but somehow, when the roads, the new roads get built, they're not wide enough to accept them. And although they sometimes will make a bike path just by putting a white line two feet from the edge, and then you have to ride a bike in there, and then put room for the cars, so it sometimes isn't really a safe opportunity. So, and it seems to me that these bike paths, along with paved roads, is a very cheap thing to do. All you can do is come up with a white line on the pavement, and you got a bike path. Not a big deal. And a lot of people bike out here. I bike out here, I walk out here, so does everybody practically on this board, and it's not hard to find people out there that are getting their daily exercise doing that, so if you can put in a good word for white paint, I would appreciate it.
Happy to have our staff come out and talk some more, too. We have some experts in.
We'd love to have them.
In the TAP program, but also just in ped bike work, so.
Yeah, I'll give you my card.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Again, thank you so much for being here. I only have about 1,200 of these left, so I don't know. Thank you very much. Okay. Be careful driving back.
Oh, thank you.
You bet. And now Commissioner Jay Drick will continue the agenda with the resolutions for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're on item number 12 of our amended adopted agenda. Resolutions for consideration, we'll start with 12A. It's numbered 2023-03-026. It's brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Michigan Department of Human Services Board. Can I get a motion to adopt?
Move the resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Nakagiri, seconded by.
Discussion?
Comment? Question of any kind? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution kindly say aye.
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 It's nine to zero for adoption, and it passes. Thank you. Item number 12B is number 2023-03-027. It's a resolution approving an appointment to the Livingston County Planning Commissioner, brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. May have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
So moved.
Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Domas, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Any comment, question, interrogation, waterboarding? Seeing none, we'll move into voting. All those that are in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero passes unanimously. We're on to number 12C. 2023-03-028 is its number. It's a resolution to concur with the Livingston County Aeronautical Facilities Board to enter into a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA of 2021. It's brought to us by Mark Johnson of the airport. Mark, are you on Zoom?
That's affirmative.
Could you please present? Excuse me. Motion to, or thank you, we have the motion. Please proceed.
This grant is $59,000 and typically FAA grants cannot, can only be used for capital expenses. But this can be used for operational expenses. And that's what we intend to do with it.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, I had a thought, please. Mark, what, what sort of operational expenses would, would you be considering?
We're going to use it for payroll. That's about the easiest and it's very, very clean should this ever be audited.
So you're, this is, this is not adding new people, you're just gonna use it to
Use it for existing, to cover existing payroll.
Thank you.
Any further question, comment from commissioners for our director? Seeing none, all those in favor to adopt the resolution kindly say aye.
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 No one opposed, it is nine to zero passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item number 12D, it's number 2023-03-029. It's a resolution of intent to apply for financial assistance for fiscal year 2024 under Act 51 of the Public Acts of 1951. It's amended and it's brought to us by LETS. Is there a motion to adopt?
So move Gross.
Support Smith.
Moved by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Smith. Director Kellogg is here to present. You have the floor.
Thank you and good evening commissioners. So this is our annual state funding application. All of this is required by Act 51 in, in order to get the state operating funds, which fund roughly 35% of our operating costs for various programs. And also a 20% capital match to, to the federal capital grants that, that cover the 80, 80% of those. This I can, I'm happy to go through these individual programs here. But it's, this is, it's about, it's the same, same process every year. This particular set of programs we've, we've had in place for about two years now. So no, no new programs, actually slightly less funding than, than FY '23, the current year. Because the, well, beginning this year with FY '23, a lot of the COVID supplementary funding has, has been used by now. So we're back to our, our normal funding programs at the normal reimbursement rates. So there's, there's lots here. If you, I'm happy to answer any questions. I sort of gave a brief summary of the programs last week at general government. But I am, I'm happy to do that again if, if you'd like.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, an oral vote kindly vote aye, yes, if you approve the adoption.
Aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero passes.
Thank you, commissioners.
You're welcome. Next up is number 12E. It's a resolution authorizing the reorganization of clerical positions in the Health Department. It's brought to us by Matt Bowling. May I have a motion?
Move Halserman.
Support Gross.
Moved by Commissioner Halserman, support by Commissioner Gross. Matt, I believe you're online. Can you hear?
Can you hear you? Can you hear me?
Yes, you may proceed. Thank you.
I turned my video on, but I have problems. Um, anyway, uh, here we go. This is a resolution, it's more of a housekeeping resolution to remove some of our COVID funded clerical positions that are no longer needed and are currently vacant. It also makes one employee whole with funding outside of our COVID supported grant dollars. So this was presented at general government last week and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, commissioners. Any questions, comments? Questions or comments? Director, these were COVID positions that were, you no longer have COVID work for? Is that the general notion?
They, they haven't been funded for some time now. They were created, Diane McCormick brought them to this board a couple of years ago in anticipation of needing them. It's one of the pooled positions, the 2.5 pooled position. A portion of that position was used by Teresa Almond, which is the clerical position we're trying to make whole with, with other funding. The rest of it had, had not been used. So no, we're no longer using these, they are vacant, we're not eliminating people, just positions in our budget.
I get it. And what's the source of the funding for the bump from the 0.73 up to an even one?
It'll come from grant sources from the state of Michigan and, and various programs that we have through our essential local public health funding. You know, that we come every year for approval from, from you folks. And it comes from a variety of those programs.
And so this administrative specialist is, is funded with state money?
Yes, this is not general fund money. This is going to be made whole with, with other funding sources we have in the department.
Got it, got it. Thank you. And my questions or comments, triggered any questions or comments by other commissioners? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor kindly voice vote say aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, it passes. You're still up, Matt, hang on. This is resolution for consideration 2023-03-031. It's a resolution creating the water, excuse me, the public water supply coordinator position in our Health Department. May I have a motion to adopt?
So move Halserman. Second sample.
Moved by Commissioner Halserman, seconded by Commissioner Sample. Matt, would you kindly present on this one too?
Sure. So this position is being created primarily to manage and organize our non-community public water supply program. This is an Eagle contract program that I bring to you folks every year for approval. We've, we've been understaffed and the state of Michigan has understood that local firms have been drastically underfunded in this program. This is an opportunity to, I guess, let me back up. The current Eagle grant has increased our funding by over $200,000, mostly in support of activities in this program area. It's an opportunity for us to, to make our staff whole and, and be more efficient in this program to provide this position to oversight of the non-community program along with some, some other functions we haven't been able to do. You know, just, just make us more efficient in the department and, and address some of those water supply quality assurance issues and, and compliance issues that we deal with our contract with the state. So I hope I didn't ramble too much there, but that's, that's the intent of this resolution is to create this position for those functions.
Commissioners have any questions, comments?
Commissioner Gross, proceed. Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to remind my colleagues that in general government last week, we, we talked about this. There's a significant number of, of non-community public water sources wells that need to be inspected, checked, et cetera. And the previous week, when I had a conversation with Director Bowling, he pointed out that the well at Zuki Lake Tavern is one such well. And so last week, I'd like to remind my colleagues, a comment was made, it's good to know that they have good drinking water at the Zuki Lake Tavern. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
I like that report.
Matt, I have a question. On your memo in the first paragraph, it talks about there's some responsibility for outbreak investigations. And an outbreak investigation would be an example?
An example might be Legionella. An example, it could be some sort of parasite in the water system, Cryptosporidium, Giardia. The, we, you know, it is possible to have waterborne outbreaks. We fortunately don't have some of the larger commercial buildings or large hospital systems that sometimes get the Legionella issues. But I mean, they, these things do occur from time to time and it'd be nice to have expertise in the department when they do arise, so.
And there's more than enough in the 235,000 extra to cover the, the new gentleman or person's wages and benefits, correct?
So this will be entirely covered by funding through the Eagle contract.
Thank you. Has my questions or comments triggered any questions or comments by the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you, all those in favor kindly vote, voice vote, yes.
Aye.
For aye. Nine to zero passes unanimous.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Matt. Next up is resolution on the agenda of 12G. It is numbered 2023-03-032.
Move the resolution, Halserman?
Second sample.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. It's time for discussion.
We, we, we amended it in committee. And so I don't think we need to amend it again and full, to full board. I think it comes, comes to us amended. Is that not correct?
Is accurate though.
Uh, yes, I it, it, it should be, yes. See, it, it is written with, with the changes there. And those changes have been improved, yes, so as, as it is presented.
We have a correct one. It came out of the committee. Thank you for that point of order. Commissioner Domas.
Yes. We had, we had reviewed this at committee and I'm, I'm only sorry, we don't have someone from Human Resources, but
I am here, President.
Would you care to give us an update on this, please?
I absolutely will. Thank you. So this is a resolution to increase retiree healthcare part B payments to certain retirees. It impacts about 52 retirees right now. And the increase would increase the annual payment that they receive presently from $500 a year to $620 a year. This payment, just to give you some background, was instituted in 2008 when the county overhauled the retiree healthcare approach. We're removing prescription drug coverage for retirees age 65 and older so that those employees, so those retirees could participate in a Medicare part D program. So when the retiree healthcare prescription drugs were removed for those age 65 and older, the county instituted these annual payments to retirees. And those payments had not been increased since 2008 when it was instituted. This is, was a topic actually Commissioner Domas asked us to look at. And we're recommending increasing it by the same percentages as the COLA for active employees since 2008. So it would be a one-time adjustment. And then moving forward, the resolution is written such that if the Board of Commissioners approves a cost of living adjustment for active employees, that that would be passed along to the, these retiree healthcare payments. The total cost increase for current retirees is about $4,000 a year. Including future sheriff retirees who will also be eligible. That increases it by another 5,400 or so, bringing the total potential cost to about $9,500 per year. And I'm, we discussed it in personnel and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We talked a little bit about dealing with this at the budget discussions. And perhaps that may be the best place to review this. It's not in the budget and that 95, whatever it was, thousand dollars.
$9,500, so it's under 10,000, just to be clear.
I would, I would take the temperature of the board when it comes to whether this ought to be approved now or, or allowed to go through the budget process. So I would offer an amendment that instead of dealing with this this evening, that we move this into the budget process for determination. Yes, I'm sorry.
Unless you're gonna second, let's hear if there's a second. That might take care of your comment. Is there a second to an amended motion?
Would that be a motion to amend or a motion to postpone?
I guess it'd be a motion to, to postpone.
I, I support that then, Yanni.
We have a motion to postpone. To date certain, is there a date?
No, it'll, it'll just go into the budget process, which is September. I'm not sure.
I think we kick it off in a couple of weeks, actually, but
Yes.
Administrative bird.
So we do kick off our budget in a couple of weeks. This particular item wouldn't necessarily be in the early part of the budget process. We do revenue estimates for a few months before we get deep into it. If we wanted to, we could make a note to have this resolution be brought back as we get further into the process. I don't know if you want to refer it back to personnel for a discussion as we get, you know, farther along in the budget. And then it could also be part of a budget process if, if I can remember with Jennifer to talk about this at the budget, we'll make, and we'll make a note of it. So that's certainly fine if that's what the board wants to do. We'll find a place to appropriately bring it back while the budget's being deliberated. I don't know with, with our legal counsel, I don't know if we need to postpone it to a specific date. Or if we can postpone it to generally speaking, the process. So I, Matt, if you're available, is there a appropriate way to do this? I don't think Matt's available.
Commissioner Gross. Obviously, if we want to go into the budget process, that funding would become effective in 2024. My question is, do we need to worry about making any payments between now and next January? If we do, if there is a payment scheduled, we made, say in July, I think we need to react to that situation with this resolution.
So Commissioner, there, those, these, any, this annual amount is split in half and it is sent in the summer and the winter. But the resolution presently, I, I would see no change. It would continue to be the 500, a percent of the $500. So I don't think any action is needed if you wish to leave it status quo. If you wish to increase it, then action would be needed. Otherwise, the program would just continue until amended.
So, so just to clarify then, that there's no, no payments would be made during this calendar, during this fiscal year. So that would open the way for in putting it in the budget for next year.
There, there are payments and payments have been made twice a year since 2009. So what I'm saying is the program is in place now per the resolution. This is a resolution to increase it, but if the board chooses not to increase it now, then the current payments then the current payment structure would just continue going forward until amended.
So, so the increase would then become effective for next budget year?
You got it, if approved by the board.
Commissioner Domas?
Yeah. Nathan, is there any reason why, you know, let me just tell you how I happen to get involved in this, and because during my period of retirement, in which I, the board back in two thousand and eight discontinued supporting retirees in their, in their healthcare needs. And instead, they, they, and I don't have the resolution to look at, but I can tell you what the numbers are. The board decided at the behest of the, the then administrator to send each of these retirees a check in the amount of eighty-seven dollars every six months. And that was to be used to defray the cost of supplemental healthcare coverage. Now, eighty-seven, I don't know how many of you people get healthcare coverage at all, from wherever, whatever sources, but that's never changed. That, and, and our, and our retirees, I think deserved a better shake than that, and and so that's, that's why I brought it to Personnel, I brought it to Human Resources, because it's stagnant and a lot of other changes have taken place until, since, during that time. Now, my, my, my thought is, you either, if you believe that that's a good idea, doing it now or doing it in September or whenever that comes up is irrelevant. If it's not a good idea, forget it. If it's a good idea, let's just get rid of it. And I would, I would ask the administrator, are we, is, is this a budget buster? Or is it the right thing to do? I mean, we've spent a lot of money on a lot of things that probably we had less justification for.
Yeah, I mean, at the moment, it's less than five thousand dollars increase, so I would not define it as a buzz, a budget buster. That, that money can be absorbed pretty easily into our budget. It's really just a matter of what the board wants to do. If you, again, if you want to delay it to have it be part of a budget discussion, we can do that, that's fine. But it's, if you're asking if it's a budget buster, the answer is no. It's not a budget buster.
And I, and I'm, I'm not, you know, I brought this thing forward, but I'm not a retiree, and so, yeah. I'm, I'm, well, I'm through talking about it. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair?
Oh, hi, Matt. I was asking a question a moment ago about the proper way to postpone this resolution, if it needed to be postponed to a date certain. The discussion of the board a moment ago was about waiting until we get into budget discussions to do this. There's been some additional conversation, but that was a question I was going to direct to you a minute ago, Matt.
Sorry, I had one too many copies today. You can postpone to a general directive like that. That, that is not out of order, and if you want to give it a date, you can, and if you want to assign it to a process, you can do that as well. Roberts really is just designed to prohibit something from being left in the unknown realm for, for delay, and this would not be that case.
Mr. Chair, just to reiterate a thought, we, I think the first thing to do is decide whether this is a good thing or reasonable thing to do at all. And then where it goes in the process, that's the simple part. So I would, we're doing, yes, sir.
We're still in comment after a motion to postpone. So we're still in comment, and I see.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I, I said this in personnel, I'm, I'll pretty much repeat the same thing. The, yes, it's a small amount of money, and, and as I would just stated, it is not a budget buster. But that being said, it is, it could be up to nine or ten thousand dollars annually, which is still a small amount of money. However, I, I, as I stated earlier, I'm opposed to this resolution because the beneficiaries of this resolution also receive the, the best pension plan available to county employees, retirees, and that's the fully defined benefit pension program, a program that was deemed a number of years ago to be unsustainable and was done away with for a hybrid plan, which that turned out to be unsustainable, and now we have a defined contribution plan for new employees. So we have a, a set of employees and spouses, you know, I think the number was fifty or fifty-two, that get this, I'm gonna call it highly, I'll, I'll call it gold-plated benefit plan, for lack of a better term, and we are considering adding a little bit of platinum trim on it, which I'm, I don't think is right. Not only do they get the fully defined benefit pension plan, but they also have a cost of living allowance on their pension, something that was put in place at the, at the time this, this resolution we're amending was put in place. A cost of living allowance of two and a half percent per year, non-compounded, fortunately, but a cost of living allowance nonetheless, so their, their pensions go up every year. The cost of living allowance on a pension is something that is, I'm not gonna say there's no companies doing that, but there are not very many that are doing that anymore. It is, it is unsustainable. It was unsustainable. It is unsustainable. The, just as a point of interest, having worked on all of the background to reform our pension system last year, to convert it to a defined contribution plan, it was observed that the pension liability at that time was thirty-eight million dollars. That's what, you know, unfunded liability. Of that thirty-eight million dollars, about twenty-two million dollars was due to the COLA. So had we not had made the decision back in two thousand oh eight to go to the COLA, our pension liability today or, or a year ago would have been about sixteen million dollars. It, it's a substantial, would have been a substantial savings to the taxpayers. But anyway, I just wanted to explain my rationale, where, where I was coming from, but obviously, it's the will of the majority of the Board of Commissioners. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further comment? Commissioner Helserman, proceed.
Happy to make the decision right now, as opposed to postponing. I think that the county is, is committed to keeping our promises that we made to retirees. This is not a promise made to retirees, so we have no obligation to do this. This, in my mind, would just be out of the kindness of our heart, if there's such a thing as the kindness of a commissioner's heart. And so I, in committee, I moved it forward so that people could, the full board could talk about it, and so to postpone, in my mind, I should have voted no to not bring it forward. I brought it forward so people could, so the full committee could talk about it. And so I will be a no if we decided today. I'll be a no to postpone, because I think we should make the decision today. We have enough information to make the decision today. There's no reason to kick the can down the road.
For the, I guess I should say, my train of thought for postponing is simply to postpone it to the budget discussions. This was not taken up on last year's budget discussion for this year, and that's simply my train of thought and motivation for bringing this on their budget discussion. It's not whether to make a decision, yes, are we gonna do this or not do this? It's more so just to do it for next year's budget. I don't want to dip into our contingency for this year's, this year's budget. So that's, that's why I made the support to the motion, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any further comment? Analysis, discussion? I'll have the last word. When I first read it, I thought it should be in the budget discussion and not a tiny little piece ahead of time. So having said that, we'll go voice a vote, all those that wish to postpone. Is that the resol, is that the, the first resolution we're gonna deal with is to postpone, and then we go back to the main resolution? So this is to postpone, yes or no? All those that would like to postpone, please say yes.
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 Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, I'm counting. Six to postpone. And that leaves three, if everyone, nobody abstains. All those nays?
Nay.
Nay. Three nays. So we have three no, so the matter is postponed for the budget process. And Nathan is making a note, and Jennifer's making a note, so we're all set.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Moving on then to resolution H two oh two three dash oh three dash oh three three. It's a resolution amending resolution two oh two one dash oh six dash oh nine five, which was, which established a uniform procedure for nominating and selecting citizens for board committee-appointed positions. It's brought to us by the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Helsman, after, first, I'll call for a motion to adopt.
So move sample, support.
Moved by sample, supported by Domas to adopt. All, now we'll go into, Mr. Helsman, if you'd like to present.
I think we've presented it quite a bit. It's just, I think, bringing some common sense into our, our. Whenever you make something new, it's always good to revisit it in a year or two to take out the kinks and whatever. That's basically what this is.
Thank you. Any comment or question analysis before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, voice votes, kindly say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Vote, sounds like it's eight to one, and it passes. Next, we're going to some papers that are not necessarily clipped to your agenda. The first one that we'll take up is the resolution brought by Board of Commissioners, I believe, Mr. Nakagiri. It's a resolution providing commissioners with full access to Livingston County Financial Records dashboard of Commissioners. It was resolution two oh two three dash oh two dash oh two five, and this is up for now reconsideration. And would there be a motion to adopt?
Motion to reconsider, I am from where the place that it was before. And it was.
Motion to reconsider is made by Commissioner Helsman, with support by Commissioner Deaton. We'll now move into presentation, if any. Commissioner Nakagiri.
I, I would make a motion to amend the resolution, extending the date from April first, two thousand twenty-three, the implementation date from April first, two thousand twenty-three to July first, two thousand twenty-three, and for adding one more, be it further resolved, it should state, be it finally resolved, one year after its implementation, the Finance and Asset Management Committee will conduct a review to assess the effectiveness of this resolution. Accordingly, a discussion item shall be placed on the agenda of the Finance and Asset Management Committee, enabling this review to be conducted.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved to amend by Commissioner Nakagiri, with support by Commissioner Helsman, and my first question is to our secretary. Do you have these wording?
I do. I was provided a copy. Thank you.
They seem to be in red on mine.
Yes.
So I'm pretty sure you had them, but I wanted to double check.
Thank you.
So we have a correct record.
Mr. Chair?
Proceed.
I apologize for interrupting. I looked at the resolution. I just wanted to confirm there may be another amendment that Commissioner Nakagiri would like, which is to be it further resolved, this resolution does not apply to the courts. I do not know if that was in the original resolution. It is not on the online copy.
It, it is in the resolution that was, that be it further resolved, this resolution does not apply to the courts, was approved by the Board of Commissioners last meeting before the, that, that amendment was approved before the whole resolution was defeated. So we're, we're starting from what was approved by the Board of Commissioners, which had the, the carve-out for the courts.
Great. As long as that's there, I, that's all I wanted to point out. Thank you.
Thank you. The Secretary, you all said, thank you. Commissioner Helsman, comment, question?
I will just make some comments. Last time, you know, I made it clear that I thought that the spirit of this resolution is authority that we already have. And so the resolution is not necessarily needed, but in that we don't have it, I think there's not a problem doing it. The reason I voted against it was because it was going to be adopted immediately without giving the county treasurer and other people, I believe there's twelve different people that kind of keep watch over the system, and I think that's very good. I think this will give them time to work that out. I would suggest, it's my suggestion that each month they come to the Finance Committee with a report as to how they're coming with this, so that we understand what difficulties they're running into. I also think that, again, that when you do something that is as new as this, there's apt to be things that are not said correctly, or I think that we do need to look at it next year and decide whether there's tweaks we need to make, or whether this is really a bad idea. You know, I don't know. You know, I think it's a good idea, but any good idea can be misused, so anyways, I favor.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comment? Commissioner Gross? Thank you, Chair. I have several concerns about this. First and foremost, we have an established procedure for bringing resolutions to the board, and this particular resolution was dropped on the dais ten minutes before we started our meeting, which doesn't really allow very much time to read through it and give it full consideration. Secondly, the last time we, we addressed this, our treasurer was here and spoke very eloquently about her rationale for, for why this could not be done, at least not very easily. And there was a question about the timing. I see there's been an attempt made to adjust for that. The third thing is, I, inasmuch as this will be the final resolution on the subject, I feel that the verbiage with respect to the courts being exempted should be part of this, the fact that it was in a previous.
this. The fact that it was in a previous resolution, which was defeated, doesn't mean it automatic, I don't feel automatically carries over. So I, I'm concerned that there's a lack of verbiage concerning exclusion of the court system. And lastly, having an understanding of the desire of the author of the resolution in terms of the information that is being sought, there are other alternatives available, which apparently have not been chosen to be used. And so I don't feel like this is, while I understand it's legal, I don't feel it's warranted. So I just want to make those comments. Thank you.
May I ask for clarification? You have the sheet that I'm holding that says does not apply to courts in black ink as the last black. So I apologize, I missed that. I, I'm curious if that's the same wording that we had previously.
I, I can confirm it is. Actually, I looked it up as well and I'll pull it up here as well.
It, it is the same wording, if I may. I had requested from the clerk's office, the, the exact wording, because I, it's important that the wording is correct.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
And I will point out, that was the wording that was approved in the motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Any further comment or question or analysis? Nobody, slow down. Commissioner Smith.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I won't, I won't bore everybody with what I said a couple weeks ago. But I do find it. If there's a compelling reason to drop resolutions the day of a meeting, then, then we should be flexible enough to review them. I, I, you know, firmly believe that we're, for a small enough nimble enough group that we should be able to be flexible to do this. There's nothing compelling or, or time constraint that this shouldn't gone through our regular, our regular meeting schedule should have gone to general government governance and, and, you know, probably finance as well because it's, it's now going to be under the jurisdiction of finance apparently. So but I, I'm not, I still think it's not, it's not good governance. And I think it definitely sends a a very mixed signal to our directors. So I, I don't support it and I wish, I wish we'd just gone through the process.
Here. Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yeah, thank you. I want to address my colleagues' concerns on the procedural aspects of this. This is a, this was a resolution started as a, you know, to reconsider. So in a resolution or a motion to reconsider, it is referred back to the committee that, in, in this case, it's the full board. It's, so the decision where it was voted down was in the meeting immediately prior to this one. The, our board rules enable a motion to reconsider and the board rules say that the motion will be in order. So this isn't, I, I don't believe it's appropriate to view this as a brand new resolution. It is a, it's a reconsidered resolution, which is enabled by our board rules and and, and therefore it is proper and in, in order in, in my opinion. So, thank you.
Commissioner Fiani?
Because I have a similar appreciation, Commissioner Smith, regarding adhering to the policies and processes. I just want to provide for clarification. It actually did come before the finance committee, before it moved on, before it was approved and, and moved on to the, the full board. So I just want to provide that clarification.
Commissioner Helsman?
The only thing that's new about this is the, is the amendment and because we've had, we've had really a very, I think, thorough discussion. And we understand, you know, Treasurer Nash's point of view, I think quite well, and we respect her point of view. So I think that the only thing being new here is not the resolution. The only thing new here is the changing of the date and the inclusion of a, of, of a time to review. That's the only thing that's new about this. And in my mind, it's an improvement to what we had. And I'm satisfied with it. As, as I said, you know, if, if and when any member of this board abuses the authority that we have, because I think we have this authority, you know, there are means to take care of abuses. I don't, I don't anticipate misuse of this. I think it'll be a positive. I think it likely will be something that is very, used very sparingly and rightfully so. So.
Thank you. A second, I'd like to address. Commissioner Domus?
Yeah. I just asked one of my colleagues here whether the motion to reconsider applies to the person who voted for the motion or voted against the motion. And in our board rules, could be anybody. I don't know how that ever happened because we rely on Robert's rules and.
But, but I, I did vote against him. So I have the right to, to call for reconsideration, even under Robert's rules.
Okay.
So that's.
I just thought I would mention that. But beyond that, and more than just that, how long are we going to deal with this thing? Let's suppose it lost tonight. Does somebody going to come back in two weeks and say, I want a motion to reconsider? I voted against it last time or for it last time or whatever? And say, and I want, I want to run it up the flagpole again? Remember something that we've learned from the last time we dealt with this, and that is our, our county treasurer, Jenny Nash, who I have a great deal of respect for, who was one of the hardest working people in the system here, came to us and said, out of the 83 counties that we have in the, in the state of Michigan, she, she surveyed all of them, said, do you allow your, the members of your board to access everything in, in Munis? And 50, I think 54 of them came back and said, no. Since then, at least one more came back with a late answer. And that was no. First thought that crossed my mind is what do they know that we don't know? And what we do today, if we were to pass this, it, it would, it would require, it, it would have to deal with commissioners that we may have 10 years from today. We can't keep these sort of things in-house. And it, it baffled me that, that, and we're all smart guys. I don't, there are 83 out there and 55 of them or so said, they don't do it. And there's got to be a reason. So any information that you want from any department head, everyone that I've ever talked to states they'll cooperate. If you want information, you can get it. I think it's pretty clear that they just don't want to turn the whole program over to any one of our commissioners. So I'll vote in opposition to this. And if four other people vote the same way, I think we'll see this thing back here in two weeks until maybe somebody who voted against it has to take the night off and won't show up to vote, won't show up to the meeting. And that's how it'll win. If that's victory, you know, I want no part of it. So I'm, I'm voting, I'm opposed to it. There's no, there's no question in my mind. Mr. Chair, it's yours.
Thank you. Any further comment or analysis or question? We're still talking about the amendment, right? We're still talking about the amendment. Seeing none, we'll now vote, voice vote on the amendment brought or moved by Wes, seconded by Doug, to amend what most of us have in the red ink and the two therefore clauses, the third, the fourth one. So those that would vote yes on the amendment, kindly say yes.
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 So it looks like three, four, five.
Should we just do a roll call vote?
Are you, yes, on the amendment? This is the amendment, right?
I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Yeah, I'll call for, I'll, I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
We're stuck. Let's see, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nakagiri?
Yes.
Commissioner Direct?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Fiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross?
No.
Commissioner Helsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Domus?
No.
And Commissioner Sample?
Yes.
Motion to amend carries.
Thank you. That moves us back into now the original motion to reconsider. Commissioner Sample?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this. Support.
Any discussion? Because we have a motion and a second motion to postpone by Commissioner Sample, second by Commissioner Domus. Discussion. Postpone to one. Indefinitely.
I made a motion to postpone it. I didn't give a date.
Point of order, you, you, a motion to postpone would either be indefinitely or to a specific date or event. So.
So without a date, I think you're saying indefinite.
Yeah.
Postponing indefinitely would be the understanding of the chair. Any questions? Analysis, statements, argument? Commissioner Sample?
For the point of discussion, I think that the people that were for this resolution didn't put as, together as much evidence to support the resolution as the opposition, Jennifer Nash, along with Cindy Urbannis, stating the potential of getting the software to work appropriately for what we were looking for. Along with that came the abundant amount of counties that don't give their commissioners access. So my thought for postponement would be so that maybe there could be some research done of why the other counties don't support, given the commissioners this authority. I wasn't opposed to the authority last time. Was actually for it. But then, based on what Jennifer Nash had to say, I decided that I would not support it. I continued to not support it until there's something substantiated of why the other counties don't give the commissioners that access to Munis or supporting softwares alike Munis.
Any other comment? Any other analysis, argument? Commissioner Nakagiri?
I, I want to just clarify the record. I've said this before, but it, I just want to make sure it's, that it's not forgotten. This issue, you know, started back in May of last year. You know, one of my colleagues tonight said, you know, commissioners can get any information they want. Not a quote, but basically any information they want. That was not the case when I approached the treasurer on, on being able to see the attachments, the on an issue I was drilling into. I would click on these transfers in and transfers out shown in Munis and it would say not authorized to view. It's, it's almost like saying, you know, analogy I'll use is, hey, you've got this whatever three, $400,000 expenditure transfer, but you, you, you know, as a commissioner, you can't see where exactly when. That's the genesis of this request. A follow-up request was made later in the year. I don't recall the exact timing, but I'm thinking it was about October because the first request was, I'll say rejected or, or dismissed because it was in the middle of the audits for the county. And I believe I'm a reasonable person. I say, okay, you know, the treasurer's office is, is swamped with the audits. I am not going to press the issues. I'll wait till after the audits were completed. Audit's completed. I guess I believe the second request came in around October. You know, it's no progress. Another request in the middle of December, no progress. And so the only recourse that an individual commissioner has is to advance a resolution to see where, what the will of the whole board is. Because as individuals, individual commissioners, we have really limited authority to get anything done. It's the will of the majority. And so that's what the, the genesis of this was. So I just wanted to correct the record in saying, it is not accurate to say we will always get the information that we ask for because I can cite, cite this specific example. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Go ahead. As far, one reason why, why I insisted that we don't, that we didn't do it immediately was because we are not ready to do it immediately. Our, the way that our system is set up, it's not a, it's not clicking one switch and we have the protections that we need and we have the access that we need. Okay. And so that's why I'm, I'm requesting that, that this committee of 12, which I think is led by, by Jenny Nash, that they look into this and every month they come back to us with a report and, and that we have the time that Commissioner Samples is asking for. And if these people come back and say we can do, we think we can do this, but we can't do this, we, we have the right to revisit this and, and work it out. But I think if we don't push this forward, we are, we will never get those answers. In, in my mind, the only way to get these answers is not to postpone it, but to go forward and have these objections come back to us in real time. And then we can decide, you know, is there, is there different wording that we need? In my mind, we've got three months. They have three months to come back to us with their plan that would give us what, what we want and, and protect what really needs to be protected. So I think the three months is, is, is an ample time. And we should be open, even if they come back to us and say we need another two months, I'd be happy to do that. But I, I think we need to find a way to make this happen. That's, and we have time. I, I don't think we need a postpone.
Commissioner Helsman, I'll just, I'll direct my question to you. Do you have any curiosity about why 65% of the counties don't allow this?
My, my, my opinion is they have not asked for it. The reason they don't have it, you know, Jesus says, you don't have something because you don't ask for it.
How do you know that? I'm curious how you would know that. I mean,
I, I don't know that.
Either side of the issue.
But, but we have no idea why that they have been denied.
Doesn't common sense make you think? Doesn't common sense make you think? Out of the 83 people who were asked, somebody would have said, oh, heck yes, we give them everything you want. I mean, does that ever cross your mind? Crossed my mind. I'm thinking, me? Doesn't.
Yo, I, I, yo, but I, I picture myself as an individual, so I think things that nobody else thinks. And I think it's okay for me to think that, you know, and it's okay for our commission to think what it wants to think. Even though we may lead a important change in county commissioners' govern, governance by doing this. You know, maybe we're the leaders. I don't, you know, I don't know. I'm not doing it for that reason. I just think it's right that we have this access. You know, you know.
Well, let's, let's put a dagger in this thing. I would move the question, Mr. Chair.
There's other commissioners that would like to speak. Would you?
I didn't see.
Delay?
Oh, yes, sir. All right. I'm sorry. Sure.
Delay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Go ahead. Couple of points of clarification. The author of the resolution highlighted a few moments ago, a bit of history where attempts were made to gather information, specifically mentioning transfers in and transfers out. And what happened last year, a year ago, six months ago, whatever, is my mind, that's water over the dam. That's ancient history. Not that long ago, in this very room, the treasurer offered to provide access in a controlled environment to give the information to the commissioner. That offer was rejected. A similar offer was extended from the drain commissioner's office. That too was rejected. The other point I'd like to make is the information being sought has been focused on some transfers. You don't need a year to check out a couple of transfers. That can be done in a matter of minutes or hours at best. And so it strikes me that there's more going on here. It, it sounds like this is the prelude to a massive fishing expedition where literally every department in this county is going to be subjected to scrutiny, deserved or not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any further comment? Commissioner Sample.
Yeah, my, my reason for postponement was, is more that I like the board to all be on the same page if we're going to accept this resolution. Like I said, I was a toss-up before. I thought the opposition gave a better compelling argument to the resolution. So that's my reason for postponing. It's not so much whether I think, I, I actually believe like Helserman believes that we're entitled to this information. How we get that information, I'm not so sure of if we're, if it's via having full access to Munis or, or not. But that's my reason for postponement is that I think it could be further vetted so that the commissioners can all have more. So we're all more in agreement than what we are right now. But, you know, so will the board, will the majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Any further analysis? Any further argument? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the postponement motion. And roll call would probably be faster.
Commissioner Sample.
Yes.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
No.
Commissioner Drick.
No.
Commissioner Deaton.
No.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Fiani.
No.
Commissioner Gross.
Yes.
Commissioner Helserman.
No.
Commissioner Domas.
Yes.
Motion to postpone fails.
We'll now move on to the main motion to reconsider brought and moved by Helserman, seconded by Deaton. I'm going to not go into comment.
So my question is, this is, we've already decided reconsider. This is, this is a discussion of the motion itself. The next vote would be a vote on the motion itself.
This is the final.
Okay.
Vote.
As amended.
As amended. Yes. And we'll do a roll call also. Please.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
No.
Commissioner Sample.
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross.
No.
Motion carries.
Our concluding resolution was put on the agenda this evening. It's a motion essentially in favor of the sheriff's department submitting a request for community funding relative to Congressman Slotkin's notice. And we'll start with a, I'm calling for a motion to adopt, please.
Mo- motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of a community project funding application submitted by administration and sheriff's department. Fiani.
Presentation.
Yes, thank you, commissioners. I'll, I'll keep this brief and I appreciate you adding this tonight. The reason that we're asking for this to be approved tonight is so that we can be in adherence with our grant policy, which requires board approval for any grant application over $25,000. So the sheriff's with us virtually tonight. I'll let him talk about what he's looking to secure through this grant. But I did want to just let you know that the community project funding process is always super rushed in the beginning. We got an email at nine o'clock at night on March 1st that local governments in the seventh congressional district were eligible to put ideas forward. Those ideas were due initially on March 9th, and then I think they extended it a day or two. And the reason that we're here tonight is that any project that's selected could have an application due as soon as March 21st. And so the information was shared with departments. I believe the sheriff's department is the only one who submitted a one-page proposal summary, which you have a copy of. And so I wanted to prepare a resolution that would allow them to move forward again in accordance to our grant policy. I do want to mention also that the scope of this program has narrowed significantly. Many projects that would have been eligible the last two years are not eligible anymore, including our ambulance grant that we got last year. So very happy that we, we did that last year. It was shared with us that that would not have been an eligible project to put forward this year. So we're happy about that. So the options were a little bit limited this year, but the sheriff's department's put together a good request. And I would ask for your approval on this. We don't know if they'll be selected to go to the next phase. The Congresswoman is typically selects 20 projects from the district that have been submitted. And so as soon as we find out if it's yes, then they'll be, if this is adopted, they'll be able to move forward. If it's no, then this was not necessary at all, but we just wanted to be prepared. So Sheriff Murphy, if you're able to speak to what you're asking for, that might be helpful as well.
Yeah. So thanks. Nathan did a nice job on giving the 30,000 foot level. So I'll just go to the 20,000 foot level. Short story is, this will not cost the county anything. The grant we submitted for the one pager, as Administrator Bird mentioned, is kind of the preliminary request. And if we're still in the dance, then we'll go further, assuming the board approves this. No brainer. It doesn't cost the county any money. There's no matching funds. It's just simply what we asked for if it's approved ultimately. And that is $100,000 was the grant. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read it or not, but Sergeant Seld did a nice job putting that together. Long and short of it is, we have had some training tools at the sheriff's office for a number of years that has, with anything, gotten better with technology. However, our current system that we use is 2D. It's basically, you know, on a screen. It's interactive as much as it can be interactive with a screen and scenarios where this new system is virtual. So virtual reality, if you've maybe grabbed your grandkids' virtual, virtual reality goggles, you, you have some sort of indication of, of what we're looking for. The other advantage to this too, and, and we think, first of all, it hits all the, the hot button verbiage out there as far as collaboration. One, this would include all the, the training consortium that we have. So all the police agencies in the county would have access to this. And we wouldn't limit it to that, frankly. We play nice in the sandbox with everybody. So whoever wanted to come take advantage of the equipment, we would, we would offer that up. But it's, it's, it's really based on de-escalation and how we interact with folks. And again, I don't know if you've had an opportunity, but Sergeant Seld mentioned in that, the initial packet there that, you know, our job has, our role as police officers has changed significantly. You know, we're, we're called to scenes. We're asked to be parents. We're asked to be mental health professionals. We're asked to be counselors. We're asked to be handholders. You know, when I got into business, that's not how this was. You know, we were, we were cops and we enforced the law. But the profession has changed dramatically. And these scenarios that are available in this virtual world will allow us to better, better handle those situations and better be able to synthesize in very short order what kind of situation we're dealing with and how to best handle it. So be happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioner Helserman.
So this is the equipment and a program that we're actually buying. We're not, we're not buying a training somewhere. We will have the equipment and we will be able to control who and when it would be available. If somebody wanted to do it Saturday afternoon or, or Tuesday night or whatever. It's, it, it would become ours then.
That is correct. And that, and that's a great point that you bring up. So the, the advantage to having it here local and with the other police agencies involved is, you know, you name it, Brighton City Police Department's midnight shift could come over at, you know, four o'clock in the morning and, and run a couple of people through it or whatever. It would be there for anybody to use at any time and it's ours. Correct?
Thank you. Thank you. Sure.
Any further questions or comment? Discussion's now closed. All those in favor, kindly say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nine to zero is the vote. It's passed. Commissioner.
Yep.
You're welcome, Mike. Commissioner Fiani, what point of order did you want to bring forward?
What I wanted to do is I wanted to confirm on the previous resolution that when we made the motion to reconsider, that also fulfilled the approval of the amended motion. So I would look to anyone who can speak to that, particularly perhaps our legal counsel.
Thank you. I actually just emailed the clerk the same question. I wanted to make sure that I understood Commissioner Helserman's initial motion. I, we could consider the addition to the agenda as the motion to reconsider. And then if the motion was to adopt the resolution that was before you, based on that reconsideration, we're all set. I just wanted to make sure that the minutes reflected that accurately. Otherwise, Commissioner Fiani is correct. Once a reconsideration motion is made and passed, the next action is to adopt that what has been authorized for reconsideration.
Right.
If, if you're asking me, the minutes included the amendments, including the change of the date to, I believe, April 1st. And it also included the amendment to the resolution clarifying that the courts were not included. So the motion that was before the board as amended at the end of last meeting, according to the minutes, that failed, did include those amendments. So when it came back, it contained those amendments that had been approved.
Thank you. What was Commissioner Helserman's motion before the amendments were considered?
My, my motion was to.
Reconsider 20.
No, my motion was that. Well, I don't, what did you write down?
It was a motion to reconsider. I believe that's.
Okay, so if that's what I stated, that's then there does need to be a vote. Cause that was my question to, to the chair. Are we voting on reconsideration? Cause that's what he asked for. Cause if we're voting on reconsideration, we already voted on that. But then he said, no, we're voting on them. He said, we're voting on the, the amend, or the, the amended resolution. So, so I didn't object to what he said.
Perhaps it would be most appropriate to bring the res, amended resolution to the table to vote on.
I concur.
Then, then I move the, are we going to have to go through the whole thing again?
No. All you need to do is move the amended resolution for, for adoption.
Okay, I moved that we reopen this and we do the final step and, and have the vote.
Commissioner Helsman, do you move to adopt the resolution providing commissioners with full access to Livingston County financial records as amended?
Yes.
Sir, second. Second. Second by anyone want any more further comments?
Commissioner, can you please speak up? We can't hear you on Zoom.
Excuse me. Any further comment, discussion or analysis? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote for this motion. Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Helserman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domas.
No.
Commissioner Sample.
No.
Commissioner Nakagiri.
Yes.
Commissioner Drick.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Commissioner Fiani.
Yes.
And Commissioner Gross.
No.
Motion to adopt carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Attorney Norford. And thank you, Commissioner Fiani. We have a complete and full record. The next item on our agenda, we're no longer in resolutions. We're now at item 13, the accounts payable and reports. May I have a motion to adopt and pay the claims and pay the payables?
So moved.
Moved by Nakagiri, support by Gross. Did I hear that correctly?
Yep.
All those in favor kindly say aye.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on both 13A and B. Item number 14 is the second call to the public for the evening. It consists of two minutes max. Is there anyone in the boardroom today?
I would.
Proceed.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a comment. I, I would invite the commissioners, if, if you, with the resolution that just passed, I want to bring your attention that there is a lot of legislation that is applicable to the records that the county clerk keeps in the Munis system. I'm going to cite specifically the CPL fund. Those records are confidential. It's criminal to disclose even to a police officer who has applied, who, and any applicant who has applied for a CPL. So I would caution you, if you're going to start going through the records with different departments, especially maybe the clerks, take time, talk to me, find out what is confidential. It's criminal to, for you to just go in and start looking. There is no exception in law to disclose who has applied for financial purposes. I, I work very hard to keep those applicants' names confidential. There's no exception for finance, for administration, for accounting purposes to the treasurer. So while I don't believe you would intentionally disclose the records that you shouldn't, I do worry about. I do worry about the unintentional disclosure. So I, I invite you to my office for education on some of the important confidential records at both the vital records and the court end, so that there is no unintentional disclosure of confidential information that's the public interacts with my office. I invite you in.
Thank you. Good advice. Any other call to the public of people in the room? Seeing none? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, Commissioner, we do not.
Zero on Zoom. Call to the public is now closed. May I get a motion to adjourn?
Go move, Helserman.
Move Domas and Helserman seconded. All those in favor, voice vote aye.
Aye.
Nine to zero, we're adjourned eight, 10 Eastern Standard Time.